Everybody is in the county. You all copy? You all ready?
So good to meet you.
So just give yourself all the silence, thank you. Yeah, good looking boys back out there. I hope they're all standing up right.
Yeah, they're all good.
Good one. Ladies and masts are not made for you. County masts aren't made for you. You probably have some people's faces yourselves out there. You do not have to wear a mask. You can wear your mask if you don't have to wear one. We just ask people to spice it up. Okay? Thank you Scott. Good morning. Thank you for being here. If you'll stand where we live and order clear. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hello, spring. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today. We're many blessings, Father, because thank you for the opportunity that we had to be a part of this meeting today. I thank you for each and every one that is in this building right now. Thank you for the families that are represented. Pray that you do with the commissioners now is to make important decisions for you and for Pennington County. Father, I just ask that you just watch over us during these challenging times with coronavirus pandemic and other things that are going on in our state and our nation. Father, we just ask that you be with us as we carry on with our responsibilities each and every day and forgive us for our sins. All this we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am on the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you for being here. Our order. The regular session of the commissioner's court on Wednesday, August the 19th, 2020, and 9th, October 18th. Announce four minutes established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensable reading of the minute of the meeting of the commissioner's court approval. Same for August the 5th. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. Is there any questions or discussion or corrections to the minute? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Brown. Second. Got a second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion about the county bills? Being none, all in favor of approval of those bills, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. General businesses, is there any general business we need to be made aware of? Do you want to have any announcements at any point? Happy calm. Okay, being none, we look to item number six, public comments. Scott, have you had any, done a thank you? Okay, we get down to one, Mr. Ronnie Jones has, uh, would like to speak on item number seven. Ronnie Jones has three minutes to speak. Pretty glad to see y'all. Good to see you, Ronnie.
I forgot the last page, the last part of the paper.
Oh.
So I didn't have time back.
Time, you got time?
You got forty-five minutes?
Uh, sorry. You got about two now, let's go.
Why is what the change, are you?
It is two.
Item number seven. I know you're going to discuss this. But I have a feeling that you've already discussed it.
Already on the agenda.
You have to really think before you give all the employees that are elected officials increases in pay. There's a lot of people out there that assist this period and taxes that aren't working. They're not getting income. And you're not passing that just for today or this year. That raise will go on forever. And those people are going to be obligated to pay it. Unfortunately, because I'm not old enough, I'm too old for it. But you really need to consider other people, other taxpayers, not just the county officials. If you're going to do it, do it for the county officials and the county employees. But that's wrong too. That's all I have to say.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ronnie. That does conclude the public comments. Item number seven, discuss and consider setting salaries for the county elected officials for local government code one five two point zero one. That was this before you. We had the public hearing. The bankers were here. Mr. Blackham was present for the public hearing. On that, that is the proposed elected official salaries. Thank much. We accept the salaries and discuss it in the budget. For this, also the proposal that I wrote on the salary. Got a motion? Is there a second? I'll say it again. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion?
I'm in, I'm in. I appreciate y'all coming in. Everybody knows how my stance is inherently on raising salaries for elected officials. I agree with y'all. We know what it pays when we come in. On the other hand, I understand there's a lot of people without jobs. But we're way behind in things that can't, that's mainly reason we're especially trying to get raises to the employees this year because our surrounding counties. What I'm hearing is not getting raises. So what a better time for us to try to close the gap between the surrounding counties and us. So I want everybody to understand, we have to balance, this court has to balance what we do with elected officials because every elected official, if they don't like what this court does, they can grieve. And then that starts a whole process of that in times past. Has gone in favor of the, of the elected official. And then that elected official in state is paying, it is a hurt pay. And if they prove that in the board of what ten, twelve systems, then that's what goes in there. And we have no say so. So we try to balance everything and try to make it good as, as well as we can. So I appreciate y'all coming in. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate Bill Lyman. He said, he said, we all good. So just remember, there's other people telling us that we should, and some people tell us we shouldn't. So I appreciate y'all. We just have to play it out.
Just I'm going to comment on that too. You guys might think forty, you are giving forty, thirty, something like that. Make that a small employee target, something like that. It's not the elected officials, it's everybody. Good point.
And we do have, we have measures in our budget. Right in case, in case the revenue doesn't come in like people predict, if we put numerous safety measures in our budget, we're not going to be in a bind. This year, we help our budget with the exception of this salary increase and a few other very minor things. We help our budget this year exactly what we want to action. Our expenses. So if we've got some, some things in there, our, our money doesn't come in like planning, we're good. We're going to make it.
Thank you, sir. In my, and you know, I promised the people when I came in, when I was campaigning for this position, I would ask for a raise, part of separate raise. And I will be excited that every day that they're applying myself when I go out.
Can I ask one question? Because I thought it was separate. I thought you're going to be voting to, for the officials, and then you're also going to be voting for employees. And we said from the get-go, we were fine with employees because that would make a difference. But if it's separate, I still, you know, just wanted to make sure that those were two separate.
They were separate.
And so you're still going to want to go to that one. Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the item we intended right now is just for the.
That's what, thanks.
The, uh, the. We don't, the rest of them will be in the budget, but when we approve, we're going to approve the budget. There's also employee, the second budget. Once you approve the budget, we, we worked it into the budget. And once you approve the budget, the proposed budget right now has a three percent. But the, the law says on the elected officials, you have to post it in the paper, running, you have to have a public hearing, and you have to vote on it second.
And then the, the elected officials can grieve.
Yeah, they can grieve.
No, they grieve, have, have grieved, the committee has grieved in their favor.
And they can still grieve that.
They can grieve. They won't have to say very angry, but they, they can go on.
Yeah.
That's how it works. The elected officials are totally opposite and employees becomes the salaries. That make sense to you?
Yeah.
That, that's why we don't vote on, elected officials have to vote on them, employees don't have to vote on them. Like it's worked in the budget, so.
Budget has to be.
Here's the thing, an employee don't have to say it. Yeah, see what I'm saying? They don't have to say it. We give them a three percent rate, they can argue. They have nobody to go to, which we're to the elected official. And then elected official, if they don't like the way they're, they can grieve. That make sense? First told us.
But, uh.
And we have some every year.
We did it. Yeah. Always there. Yeah, we have, we have. But what this does, whatever power the local government, one, once we take the vote on the elected official's salary, the clock starts ticking. Ms. Hill today, she's got the letters in her hands right there. You sent up every elected official today, they will receive notice of what the salary was posted. And they have five days to grieve that salary. And I believe it'd be five block money. To, to grieve their salary. I think we have to grieve their salary. Hearing set up to the clerk's office, I believe. Like the, the, the clerk should give someone grieve.
And we want to take the panels and move.
Oh, the letters have already went out. They know they're on the, they received, we had a meeting to choose the committee. And they're, they've been, they've already been notified by the clerk's office, you was chosen. And, or you was chosen as an officer. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor of approval of the proposed salary for elected officials, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider approving and authorizing county judge to sign contract with local government solution to add additional licenses. What this is, is kinda, uh, probably a month ago, five months ago, kinda, we approved, you know, for her to hire an additional employee. This is for LGS, uh, the software. What they did was, I thought, well, we knew there wasn't a hire that. Were to hire that person, they could do computer stuff. But what this is, is a contract between us, check, uh, A, it's a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-seven dollars a month. A for an additional, uh, license, license that they request.
Was that part of the grant also? The computer was under the grant?
I, I believe that.
Was the license also under the grant? Because the grant doesn't take place until September first. If she was probably going to hire her, hire her.
Hire her off.
Okay.
That is my understanding. It's going to be on us from now till we get this grant. She brought it in her. And it, but, but it might be part of the local match, but it, uh, I can't answer it, but that was my understanding.
And when they, they, they wanted the, the contract that's sent, they wanted to know the date, the pressure report that it was approved for me to sign it. I didn't want to sign the contract without. So.
So look.
So, does this increase the budget for next year?
It would.
Do you believe it will save?
I'll have to check the grant, okay?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it either is, we're going to approve the grant or if we approve the budget. Because we've already approved for the position. Because she got the grant.
But I don't remember us discussing the increase of license. We did the computer, but not the increase of license with LGS.
With LGS?
I'm not sure that that was increased on the budget unless it's.
A hundred and sixty-seven. We'll check.
My, my understanding that the grant's covered it, but I could be wrong.
But it's part of the natural one. We're going to need to check, check that. And, and know if it increases the budget that we're going to need to, before we approve the budget, we're going to have that. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of authorizing county judge to sign contract with local government solution to add an additional license, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and consider adding optional workers' compensation coverage for county volunteers. This came up in a meeting that I was in, and we had an elected official said it doesn't look like the, the volunteers are, are covered under, well, covered in insurance. I thought we had a discussion and stuff, but we, I know, Chris, we checked about the penalties and stuff. And the, the sheriff, one of the reserve penalties, this volunteer, and I need to carry the card that, that people will work for cover. But this is on the workers' comp. And so I went and talked to Dan. Dan did some checking. And you've got all type of work there for whether we add workers' comp, compensation coverage for county volunteers. That would be also the volunteers, and that's the hospitals, they got in your hospital, and the volunteer debtors, uh, who they, who live in the, the workers.
Yes, I just don't think the county needs any job, and finding issues, weekends, the employees that are, the volunteers that, that really are not employed by the county. I mean, uh, if, if, uh, they have, I mean, we do, as a favor, we do carry their license form. The county does. So they don't work for the county. They're restricted volunteers. And, uh, I, I mean, I think that we do need some, I mean, other counties, uh, they have a waiver, a liability that, that the deputies sort of have to sign it. To, uh, before they can work. So the county's not held liable for something that, that you get caught with. Most of them have other jobs, uh, regular jobs that they work, work for. And they're covered under their reg, regular jobs. I just don't think the county, it's, it's, it's not the money, the money, nothing. It's just the county getting involved in, in paying for insurance, uh, to volunteers that are not employed by the county. I just don't think that's right. That's just not getting hold correct.
Discussion?
Uh, well, you know, I know that, uh, Virgil has done some work on this and checked several counties, and none of them cover that carry this insurance. They require the, uh, deputies, the, the volunteer deputies or whatever you call them there, uh, reserve. Uh, that, uh, they have to sign a release saying that they have insurance. And, uh, the county's got to pay it. I don't, it doesn't, like, it's not much money. It, uh, I just don't, we don't get into it.
Yeah, it's not the money, it's just giving you the sign that we don't need to be involved in. So the county doesn't need to play any shoes for people that volunteer work for us.
Well, what I'd rather do on this right now, what I'd rather table this, is not critical items. Till we get maybe time to come and see, you know, do we have that form where they can sign, uh, you know, where they're, where they're.
They do need to, yeah, we do need, the county needs to, if they don't have that form and waiver right now, that, attorney needs to draw up a form that they need to sign. Just like other, other sheriffs in.
Yeah. Any other? Still haven't heard a motion.
I'm at, I'll probably. I'll strike a motion and we table it until we, uh, check the time and find out, you know, what we can do or, or if we can do it. We need to make the grant. We need to be sure that we're covering.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other questions or discussion? Motion is to table item number, I need to get more information. Correct? Yes. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider a surveyor's certificate of correction to plat pertaining to lot thirty-eight in Hunter Estates, page one, increasing for.
Yes, sir. This is a, a, a surveyor. And, uh, and correct if I'm wrong, this is basically a typo that was made in the plat that was submitted to us.
It's a scripter letter that was on the back of the lot on lot thirty-eight. Uh, I've done these in several counties. And, uh, the reason I'm in here asking the courts is I asked the county clerk, and they said, just do another replat. Well, I've done certificate corrections on the scripters, and I talked to a colleague, Martin Herman Johnson, and he says he's done it before, and then it's like he's in, in the glide. That way, when someone pulls that plat, I've got a nine-foot difference on the back of a lot. And y'all had copies of these?
Yes.
Yes, and it says what's in there on the plat and what the plat should read. And that way, I don't have to go back to finally replat or replat.
And, and this is the, uh, Jim Virgil and Brandon. I told him the number of all the lots is correct.
Yes.
But he just made an error on this one lot.
One lot, yes.
Which is his customer. The, the, the other two lots and their neighbors, they are correct.
Yeah. We took four lots out in Hunter Estates and made three lots out on a replat. I'm working with the plat review committee right now on that. I know we're in the process of getting those in place. But I'm just kind of wanting to get this plat corrected up because if a landlord buys this lot and sees that it says a hundred and sixty foot, you know, and it's an error. And I've done these in Dallas County, Palm County, you know, uh, different surrounding counties around here. And some, some call it an act of data correction. I call it a surveyor's certificate of correction.
I'm going to, I'm going to also accept this certificate of correction, a plat, and it's all spelled out here on, on, on this document.
I've got one other question. I've got one, two pages of this. The second page has the county court signature. I didn't know whether I needed county judge to sign it or if we just take this, my signature with my notary, since I'm the one who signed the plat and I'm notarized. If this first page could slide in there.
I think this should be signed by all of us, yourself.
Okay.
And so, you said it, clerk, it's like we have to do a replat, we should all sign that.
We don't really, uh, we, you know, the judge is, I'm sorry, saying that you don't really all have to sign it, so. It doesn't matter.
Well, I'll, I'll.
Are, are at least, uh, the commissioner of the precinct with, with the, uh, the surveyor's plat, so probably you and, and, and the judge.
I would include in my motion that we authorize the, uh, county clerk as the agent to sign it. That way it's printed in there. That court authorized, uh, to, to, to be a, to be a.
Okay, you heard the motion? Second. Got a second by Commissioner Brown. Any other question, Commissioner Key? Or Key? Being none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, thank you.
We need to go get the county clerk to sign, just like it's free, though. Do you want me to take them to the county court now? I've got them.
That'd be fine.
Or do you all, please?
You're going to go, we all.
I think she needs to know.
Yeah.
Yes.
We need to let her know that that decision was made.
Yeah, I'm not wanting to let her have the.
So it takes the wait time for it.
Yeah. Happily, she, happily, I would say, maybe you don't want to be all the office. Okay. You're going to be around anyway, aren't you, for the, for the workshop?
I was, and I guess I will, yes.
Picking up what time is it?
All right.
That's a deal.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
We get to talk. Yes, sir. Item number eleven, discuss and consider approval of the blue estate plat in precinct four.
Uh, that's mine. And they have complied with all our recommendations. In fact, uh, today, and in your book, you've got a copy of all the letters of approval from all different, actually, I think it's, it's good. People help each other do that, and I played it to you. And I'd make recommendations that we get approval.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Second. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson to approve the blue estate plat in precinct four. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty budget amendments. Circle them there, but they're just moving the money around. Is there a motion to approve of this? We have a motion by Commissioner Melton to approve of fiscal year twenty. Is there a motion to approve of this, we've got a motion by Commissioner Melton, to approve the fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty, twenty budget amendments, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about any of the questions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider approval of July twenty, twenty financial and investment board of county treasurer to be entered into minutes as Commissioners' Court. Some of the Pearson. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion for any? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government, a pervert injury, signing reports, minutes as matter of record. You got the reports before you. Commissioner West, you have your comments?
Uh, we have all the reports in, but one, uh, and, uh, he is new to this and, and didn't know exactly what to do with it, but hopefully. Uh, he had a copy of one that's been done in the past, and he will hopefully get to it, but right now, one's short.
All of them, much of them.
All of, all the other eighteen years.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the monthly reports? So did, got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn us on the, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second by Commissioner Melton. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Our, our budget, uh, our workshop. Being Thursday. All right, okay.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Yes, I would call that.